Evening everyone. And welcome to the Board of Education, Georgetown County Board of Education this evening, October nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. We will open with a moment of silence, followed by the third of the lead. Everybody would please stand. Thank you very much, and I appreciate the point in the pledge.
I am the President of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
I would like to point out that the full board is here this evening. Mr. Phil Gaff is joining us by computer because he's recovering from knee surgery, but we're all here. And we're going to start out by recognizing a lot of students who did something that my seventy-one years of late have never achieved. They have been perfect. And we're going to ask Dr. Bethany Giles, Assistant Superintendent, to get us started with this.
Good afternoon, everyone. Chairman Dull, members of the board, Mr. Price, District Administration, and our extended family on this evening, again, I say good evening. We are here to recognize our students who have made perfect scores on our end-of-year tests. These tests include the SC-BIN, that's a statewide assessment in English Language Arts and Mathematics. SC PASS is a statewide assessment program in Science and Social Studies for students in Elementary and Middle School. These assessments, again, as I stated, are administered in the spring of each school year. The end-of-course test is an academic assessment conducted at the conclusion of the following courses: Algebra I, Biology, English II, and U.S. History. This evening, we recognize students with perfect scores on one or more of these assessments. Our board members, along with Mr. Price, Mr. Coines, Executive Director of Elementary Schools, Dr. Hamer, Executive Director of Secondary Schools, Mr. Davis, our other Assistant Superintendent, will join in the recognition of these students at this time. To begin, we have Coastal Montessori Charter School, Ms. Rosemary Gray, Principal. In Science, we have Everett Pumpkin. Congratulations Coastal Montessori. Principal Teddy Graham, Pleasant Hill Elementary School. These students are currently at Carver's Bay Middle School. Emory Lewis, Mathematics. Courtney Owens, Mathematics. Congratulations Pleasant Hill Elementary. Welcome, our intermediate, representing this evening, Assistant Principal, Denetria Middleton. Daisy Dagel, Mathematics, currently at Welcome-Mon Middle School. Banks Harden, Mathematics. Apostolus Papadia, Mathematics. Reagan Roper, Mathematics. And Skylar Schoen, Mathematics. Congratulations, Welcome-Mon Intermediate. Joining to the stage, Ms. Jenny Haynes, Principal, Welcome-Mon Middle School. Lindsay Latimer, Mathematics. Abigail Williams. And if Ms. Haynes will continue to stay, we have an end-of-course perfect score from Algebra I, Ms. Lindsay Latimer. End-of-course Georgetown High School, Mr. Craig Stone, Principal. Thomas Diggs, English II. Jenna Elliott, Biology I. Catherine Wall, U.S. History and Constitution. Jason Wheeler, Biology I. Congratulations Georgetown High. Now, we have Welcome-Mon High School, Principal, Adam George. Destiny Bateman, English II. Devon Bowell, English II. Damian Bertrand, U.S. History and the Constitution. Lincoln Buckston, Biology I and English II. Ava Catalino, Biology I and English II. Mary Segway, English II. Maximus Condon, U.S. History and the Constitution. Molly Condon, Biology I. Elijah Cox, English II. Charles Danish, Biology I. Gregory De La Cruz, English II. Joseph Doxy, Biology I. Alexandra Douglas, Biology I and English II. Kaylee Edwards, English II. Stella Federman, Biology I and English II. Luke Fisher, U.S. History and the Constitution. Evan Flynn, Biology I. Liam Flynn, English II. Alexandra Ford, U.S. History and the Constitution. Corinne Fortman, Biology I. Colby Fritz, Biology I. William Gallagher, Biology I and English II. Grace Gibson, Biology I and English II. Benjamin Hamel, Biology I. Benjamin Hendricks, U.S. History and the Constitution. Sean Hendricks, Biology I. Kaylee Hoops Player, English II. Jada Johnson, English II. Jackson Kayler, Biology I. Hampton Kelly, Biology I. Luke Kibler, Biology I and English II. Tyler Kreckel, Biology I. Reagan Latimer, English II. Allison McLeod, English II. Leah Mashburn, Biology I and English II. William McCleod, U.S. History and the Constitution. Abigail Moore, U.S. History and the Constitution. Mackenzie Nesbit, Biology I. Mary Martin Oles, U.S. History and the Constitution. Pearson Paul, Biology I. Fisher Phillips, Biology I. Thomas Porter, Biology I and English II. Cameron Price, English II. Sean Roper, Biology I. Aurora Ruiz Power, Biology I. Phoenix Sartre, Biology I. Ellen Stover, Biology I and English II. Patrick Turner, U.S. History and the Constitution. Kyle Voorhees, Biology I. Sarah Weathers, Biology I. Chad Wyndham, English II. Thank you, Welcome-Mon High School. And we also would like to recognize our teachers who have students with perfect scores on the EOCs. To begin, Welcome-Mon Middle School, Kimberly Rattner. Andrews High School, Paul Morris, English II. Lee Peace, U.S. History and the Constitution. Georgetown High School, William Cox, U.S. History and the Constitution. Jamie Langston, English II. Denise Tompkins, Biology I. Welcome-Mon High School, Serena Frewelling, Biology I. Julie Yilmowicz, U.S. History and the Constitution. Brad Kibler, U.S. History and Constitution. Elizabeth McCarty, Biology I. Barbara O'Neal, Biology I. Caitlin Shell, English II. And Cassandra White, Biology I. Can we give all our students and teachers a round of applause? Thank you, board members, and those who joined on the podium. At this time, we will take a very brief intermission just to transition into the remaining part of our Board meeting.
Yeah. Lord, we were running like four minutes late. Ten minutes I started on time.
Congratulations. I'm good, bud.
Good job, Abs. Abs, we're back. We're back.
If there are public comments or requests, I do not receive any part of them. So we will move on to a couple of minutes. You received in your packet a copy of the minutes from October the fifth, twenty twenty-one. Unless there's any additions or corrections to those minutes, I entertain a motion to approve them as presented. And properly moved and seconded, if we approved the comment or the minutes from the meeting of October fifth as presented, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. The minutes have been approved. Next up is adoption of the agenda. You've had a chance to look that over. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as presented? And properly moved and seconded, if we approved the agenda as presented, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. Agenda's been approved. And the first action item is a personnel list. It's a very small list, and the administration recommends approval of the personnel list as presented. Do I hear a motion to approve the personnel list as presented? And properly moved and seconded, if we approved the personnel list as presented, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. Personnel list has been presented. The next item is an MDCon contract extension. Following is a bond referendum phase three adjustment. I'll turn those two items over to Mr. Price.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, at our last board meeting, we had the opportunity to have a presentation by Mr. Bill Cram and Mr. Bob Spire from MDCon. And we mentioned at that time that we'd be bringing back two recommendations for action in tonight's meeting. The first is a contract extension to retain MDCon for two additional years so that they can oversee the remaining projects that we are able to fund with remaining bond contingency monies over the next two years. And the second item for action is an adjustment to that Phase Three program where we, as presented at the last meeting, where we would be moving the fire alarm upgrades over into capital funds and moving in our athletic upgrades into the Phase Three plan. Mr. Spire is here. Are there any questions that I can answer myself? But those are the two items we bring to you tonight for consideration.
All right, we'll take them one at a time. The first one here is the contract extension. The administration recommends approval of extending the contract with MDCon Program Management Services for two additional years. Remaining contingency fund will be used to fund the contract extension and a ten-year facility study for future needs. Do I hear a motion to approve that extension? And properly moved and seconded, if we approved the contract extension. Are there any questions? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. The extension has been approved. The next item then would be a bond referendum Phase Three adjustment. The administration recommends revising Phase Three of the bond referendum as follows: Change the funding source of the fire alarm upgrades from referendum funds to capital funds and use those previously allocated referendum funds for specified athletic projects. Do I hear a motion to approve that adjustment? And properly moved and seconded, if we approved the adjustment, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion has been approved. Thank you, Mr. Price, and thank you, MDCon. The next action item is an administrative rule, GDF, support staff hiring. Ms. Lindsay Thompson will talk to us about that.
Evening, Chairman Dull, members of the board, Mr. Price. This is the second reading for that various libra revision to policy GED support staff hiring. And again, all we're doing is adding the phrase "a GED from an accredited institution" and adding "GED after high school diploma," just to be clear that non-accredited institutions will not qualify. And that's it.
Any questions for Ms. Thompson? The administration recommends second and final reading approval of revisions to policy GDF, support staff hiring, as presented. Do I hear a motion for approval? And properly moved and seconded, if we approved the administrative rule, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. It has been approved. Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Appreciate it. That's the last action item we had. We have one information item, and that concerns after-school tutoring programs. Dr. Giles, Dr. Hamer, and Mr. Collins, and members of that board.
Good evening again, Chairman Dull, members of the board, Mr. Price, District Administration. This evening, we present a brief update on the status of our after-school and tutoring programs in our schools. GCSD has assessed our students using several data sources to identify the impact of the COVID-19 pandemic on student learning. We have allocated funds for high-impact tutoring and after-school programs. Students in grades K through twelve have begun to receive high-quality tutoring and remediation based on content or skill mastery. Progress monitoring is being conducted to ensure that students are benefiting from the assistance being provided. Attendance and student engagement are being checked as well. It is our goal that these programs will assist with lessening the academic gaps and providing social and emotional support to our students. So to begin with a brief update on elementary schools, Mr. Coines.
Thank you, Dr. Giles. I think Dr. Giles covered it all. Dr. Hamer and I were just talking about it. But, Mr. Dull, board members, Mr. Price, district staff, and guests, Project Excel, which is our extended curriculum and extended learning, the name for our after-school program, officially began in our elementary schools on September twenty-seventh. Some schools opted to start the following week to ensure that beginning of the year assessments were complete due to quarantines and other things that were going on at individual schools. While the number of our students being served at each site will vary based on available personnel, you will find that the structures of the programs are almost similar based, again, on staff. Each school has a site coordinator that recruited staff and helped drive the schedule. The schedules include a time for outside play, social and emotional learning, targeted instruction in reading and math and writing, and what we are most proud of is the enrichment component. Because we are focusing on the whole child, we wanted to include enrichment activities in areas that will be engaging and exciting, and also attract those students who probably wouldn't stay to stay. I'll provide you with a schedule from some of our schools, but as you will see, there is coding, arts and craft, drama, public speaking. Some schools have media and film editing, STEM and STEAM, yoga, dance, and robotics. The schools were very creative in their afternoon schedules. I do want to add that we are utilizing approved district programs and resources for instruction to ensure fidelity as well as progress monitoring, as Dr. Giles stated, to track student growth. This is a priority, and that's a brief overview of our after-school programs in the elementary schools. Dr. Hamer?
Good evening, Chairman Dull, members of the board, Mr. Price, district staff, and the guests. It's my privilege this evening to touch on the middle and high school high-impact tutoring programs combined with our in-school remediation opportunities that are available for all students as well. At the middle and high schools, students have the opportunity to sign up for before- or after-school tutoring based upon the individual needs and schedules of the students and schools. All four core areas have been allotted one day each week, Monday through Thursday, and students can sign up for one hour of either before or after-school tutoring based on, again, their needs and schedule and the pre-approved schedule at each location. Approximately eight to fifteen students, on average, have been taking advantage of this when you out up our middle and high schools each day. In addition to these opportunities, all four middle schools have thirty minutes built into their schedules for individual interventions using iReady software, and all four high schools have built in a remediation period, either as a standalone town or as part of the Smart Lunch concept, which allows any student that is failing in class needing assistance with content or desire to accelerate enrichment to be able to work with their individual teachers at least once a week during the school day as part of an expanded lunch schedule. At the high school level, the remediation periods and/or Smart Lunch times are scheduled for each block once a week with either Wednesdays or Fridays being utilized for club and activity time, depending on the location. That's a brief overview of our middle and high. And Mr. Coines, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Yes, ma'am.
How many students do we have that participate regularly?
After-school, it ranges in attendance from twelve all the way up to fifty. I think McNamara Elementary is our largest site.
We're offering bus transportation.
Yes, sir. Bus transportation and a snack is available at each school after-school, and our days are Mondays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays.
I'm just curious, I guess this is for safety reasons. I got behind the bus off of Waverly, and it was almost five o'clock. Now, it's not a problem now, but once we get off of Eastern Daylight Setting Time, it's going to be dark, you know, earlier. I'm just curious, what's the latest, and I know this is probably for Mr. Davis, and I don't mean to put him on the spot, Mr. Collins or Dr. Hamer, but what's the latest time that a bus is on the road? You know, and I'm really speaking of the little ones because I saw some elementary people, Mr. Collins, you know, getting off. Couple of them, the parents were there, but a few of them, there were no parents, and are waiting for them at the bus stop.
That was one of our major deterrents in recruiting staff and students because of the time and the time change that will be upcoming. We originally had five-thirty, but we had to move back to four-thirty, and because of all the reasons that you stated, so there is some concern when the time changes. But Mr. Davis probably can answer specifically, but I think the times vary depending on the location, and the reason why the after-school time for the elementary is a little bit longer is because of dismissal time at the middle and high is three-thirty. So you have to give those bus drivers time to carry those students home safely to get back to the elementary school. So that will be a concern upcoming, but we cannot reduce the time because of our school day schedule. Yes, I have a sample in my hand that I can get to you from one of our elementary schools that I can give you exact numbers per school, per site. And he asked for a sample of the schedule and the amount of students at each school. That was Mr. Gassett. Thank you.
Mr. Dull, members of the board, Mr. Price, good evening. Dr. Farrell, to answer your questions, taking approximately an hour to get those students home, and that is at our father's locations out in the rural areas. But when time changes, of course, that depends on the number of students that ride on the buses, so after time changes, we might have to adjust that depending on, you know, how many students are riding at the different schools. But it depends on our ridership numbers.
Thank you.
I have a question for Dr. Hamer. The high school students, there's before and after-school option for the student side. The high school students, there's before and after-school option for the students signed up, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And you said about eight to six to eight to 15?
About eight. When we looked at numbers today, on average, any day you could have as little as eight per school. So I'd say six before over eight schools, as many as 15 have stayed. So it's been anywhere between six before and probably a month group on a different day. Depending on the subject, depending on the week. Yes, ma'am? Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Pope, our Yenda's line, I have a real concern about the rate of their dad. Some of those children get on the bus as early as 6:30, 6:40 in the morning, and they're not getting done until 5:00.
Yes, ma'am.
In the afternoon. That's a tremendously long dad.
That is a concern that we have, but I will assure you that most of our schools opted for the after-school program to serve grades three through five, not pre-K, K1, and 2. So those students are not remaining after school. Only in a few sites, they are after school, but most of our schools opted to only serve grades, the older children in the schools.
Can you share with us which schools that are at the Yenda's line? Thank you.
And there's no pre-K, excuse me, it would be kindergarten for a second, third, fourth there, and then at the intermediate, sixth, of course. What you are looking at is a sample schedule from one of our elementary schools to show you how we've really taken the time to actually crack the schedule to meet the needs of the whole child and not just focus on the academic, even though the academic is important, but we wanted to make sure that they have opportunity to be outside, get fresh air, and also for enrichment activities as well. And this is going to vary based on the school sites and based on the staff, personnel that is staying in after-school on those days. Thank you very much.
Any other questions in these booths? Thank you all very much. Appreciate it. That was the only information item for this evening, so now would be the time for any board superintended comments or requests.
One comment, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to thank the district staff. Every month, they send reports to the board sharing what they have accomplished or things that they've gone through for the past previous month, and I think that's very informative. I really appreciate it because it gives us an overall sense of what's going on throughout the district. So I just want them to know that we put those reports together every month. We are reading them. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Anybody else? Price?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, I just want to thank you for your approval to extend our contract with MDCon for two additional years. This will help ensure that the additional projects that we are able to complete will be done with the same level of quality that all of our previous projects have had under the leadership of Mr. Bob Spire and his team. And also want to congratulate all of our students who were recognized earlier tonight for their accomplishments on the state-level summit of assessments as well as those who were unable to attend. Despite the challenges presented by COVID last year, these students still achieved at the highest level, and it is so rewarding to see their hard work pay off. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Very good. Dr. Farrell, I'd say one thing real quick.
You know, when someone takes the place of someone else, sometimes you have to fill some really big shoes. And I just want to publicly thank Miss Amanda Ford. I mean, she's really done a tremendous job. When you consider Mrs. Parker, you know, how meticulous she was with everything. And to step into that role, Amanda, congratulations. I think you're doing a great job. So thank you.
Thank you. Well made. Any other comments or requests?
We didn't hear that, Dr. Farrell.
How much of this amount do you want to give?
All right, we do need to have an executive session this evening for a personnel matter. Do I hear a motion to go into executive session, which will be held in the chorus room for the discussion of a personnel matter? Do I hear a motion? And properly moved and seconded, if we go into executive session for the discussion of a personnel matter, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. We are now in executive session.